Ready.
Good evening and welcome to the June 24th of 2021 Village Webster Board meeting. If you would please all stand for the question, leave us and call with your leadership.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The first thing we have this evening is a presentation by Hayward, Pryor and Coon. So if, I believe it's Tom, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, your presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks everyone for taking a few minutes out. Let me just talk about your workers' comp program for a couple of minutes. So in some conversations, the village right now does not use a consultant or a broker or advisor to assist with your workers' comp program, which covers all of your employees should an injury or illness occur in and out of the course of employment. So Ella Fry and Coon is agnostic in the sense that we just want to make sure that the village is in the, you know, the right, with the right carrier, with the right plan and paying no more than you need to pay to the carrier. So that's always the goal. And how do we do that? We have the sophistication to constantly conduct market checks and monitor the conditions that drive workers' comp costs. We also have internally, and we work with a carrier, we're very familiar with the Comp Alliance, which is managed by the Association of Towns and the Conference of Mayors. And we work well with them in quite a few areas. One of the main areas is making sure that you have the loss control or the loss prevention training in place because the best claim is no claim. And so everything that you can prevent to keep your workers safe is always a good thing. And then what happens should a claim occur? We work alongside and monitor the claim process. So we want to make sure that the carrier, in this case, the Workers' Comp Alliance, manages that claim as well as they possibly can to make sure that the injured employee is getting the correct and proper care that they deserve because of the injury or illness, gets them back to work and really manages that claim to the best of their ability, which in the long run really assists the employee and assists the village. And so essentially, we would act as an extra set of eyes, making sure that your workers' comp costs, your premiums and claims, make sure that you're paying exactly what you should be paying with the goal that you want to remain as attractive as you possibly can if a carrier decides to raise premium or kind of get outside the market conditions. In a lot of instances, people reach out or contact us when they're very unattractive, kind of when claims get out of control, there's a frequency issue, there's a severity issue, and prices go up. And then they're more reactive than proactive and they reach out to us for assistance kind of at the wrong time. So our really overall goal is to make sure that you remain attracted to several carriers, which will keep your costs stabilized and checked. And so we do that through either the prevention of the claim or the management of the claim should a claim occur. Another important feature is to make sure that the carrier with you has the financial strength to make payments, you know, to the deserving injured worker. And so when you pay your premium, similar to, say, Excellis on your health insurance, the carrier includes or bakes in compensation for that extra set of eyes to work alongside the village to make sure that things are running smoothly and that your, a key term, your expense, your experience modification remains positive for you, not only currently but in the near future so that you can predict to a certain degree what your expenses are going to be in this area. And kind of, you know, looking at your program and looking at your premium, just want you want to make sure that you're rock solid going forward. So it does not, there's no direct expense from the village for myself, for Ella Fry and Coon to work along with you, with the Comp Alliance to make sure that your workers' comp program remains positive and good for you, good for you as a village and good for your boards. So I hope I didn't take too long and I'll take any questions.
I don't know if you can be able to hear you. Oh, it's still off.
Acting as a watchdog with prevention and management, did you mention anything about cost? In this program?
The, the cost to the, the cost that you pay?
Free? Cost to the village. Cost to the client.
Uh, it's, it's included in your premium.
Okay. All right, so you deal directly with the carrier?
Correct, correct. Yes, and so the carrier that you're with right now, the New York State Municipal Workers' Comp, we're one of their, we're one of their preferred agencies that they deal with. They deal with a lot of agencies. They just, because of our expertise and our volume of business, they just put us at a different level than most other agencies that they work with across the state. So given that status, I think we have a, we're in a better position to work with and negotiate with the Comp Alliance on the village's behalf.
I don't have any additional questions. Anyone else? Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
At this point, we are moving then to time on public comment. If anybody would like to address the board and they come to the podium, state your name and what you have to say. It'll be a five-minute time limit on speech.
How's it going? I'm Kevin Florak, 24 Southwood Drive. I'm a worker at the sewage treatment plant. I've been here 23 and a half years. I've tried to understand why people want to get rid of the people that have been there and treated the customer, the taxpayer, with such respect that it's really honorable. But in return, we have people that are looking at it as not a positive but a negative. I don't get that. But you have made your minds up on what you want to do and it's kind of a shame because you're not losing sewage treatment plant operators, you're also losing guys on the plow, you're losing leaf reefer, leaf breakers and other department parts, which we fill in for. That's, so we're multitasking. So by eliminating us, you're eliminating three in one. But that's up to you and I don't get it. I wish that you'd reconsider staying the way you are.
Peter Rolder, 59 Dunning Avenue. Good evening, everyone. Glad to see you. The, I just wanted to note, this will be very brief. I last meeting talked about the numbers associated with the project, the sewer, and I wanted to just sort of come up here and say, first, I wanted to thank the supervisor for his column because it was, it did lay out some numbers. I didn't know, however, the number of current, you know, year one type numbers. And I think that that's an important distinction because the other number that we need are some interval numbers, like, in numbers like five-year, 10-year, 15-year numbers, which we have gotten some studies about. But I think this particular plan that was actually presented at the last meeting also lacked those particular, what I would call benchmark numbers for where the village and the town would be in their plans. I'd like to suggest that maybe after, and I've looked at this a lot, probably too much, you've looked at it in the corner, that maybe one of the reasons why it is difficult to actually pinpoint a number here is because we have sort of a moving target. You know, what we're looking at is the town putting an incredible infusion of money into their existing plant. I think the number the supervisor gave was something like $32 million roughly. And that is a monstrous amount of money. And if you think about it, and they're doing that in a way that is injecting that money right now when the village is also looking at a similar sum upgrade to its own plant. So I think this is sort of like trying to figure out what the costs are as two objects are moving together and increasing their actual investment in those projects. So it may be difficult to find those numbers. And that's not the excuse for not getting a number, though. What that is, is maybe an explanation to why this is a premature decision at all. So I'd ask you to consider the fact that maybe what we're doing here is deciding this issue at a time when we shouldn't be. That maybe a better time to do it is when the two plants are actually sort of in equivalent status, where they're both repaired to the point where both boards feel that those infrastructures are where they're supposed to be so they can be assessed appropriately. It is really tough to assess how much, you compare your neighbor's house and your house, and you're both building your homes, the best way to do it is to get done now. And then start talking about how much things really cost at the end. There's so many things that can happen while that construction's occurring, right? Isn't that kind of where we are now? So it is difficult to find numbers, but the reason that difficulty can be completely eliminated once both plants are at a point where you can actually compare them. So we did get the figure in one of the studies about the 15-year number that keeps being thrown around about how the village doesn't act, you know, village residents wouldn't have to pay more for at least 15 years. That's a very useful piece of information because what that means is there's really no rush here. You have the ability as a village board, because it does really line the village board's decision-making process here, to simply say, not to kick the can, but to actually find the accurate number by waiting a number of years, not many, until both plants are at a point where you can actually compare them, although it's an overused phrase, apples to apples. I'd just like you to consider that in your decision-making. You guys are a great group of people, you're a good board, but there will be boards that follow you, there are boards that preceded you, that also had a lot of talented people on them, and believe me, they can pick up this football and reach the goal. Thank you.
Larry Maggio, 204 London Road. I agree with everything Peter just said. And I agree with everything the plant operator has said. It all makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of variables here. But here's the problem. There's debt to consider. That's your responsibility to take care of us, right? There's debt. And I look at it very simply. When I was growing up on Hart Road, we lived about a mile down from Heggers. And my parents would let us drink soda once in a while, my brother would pour and I'd pick. Sure, that's never happened in any other family. But if you consider those glasses full of debt, here's the problem. It's not whether or not the village and the town are equal in terms of what it's going to be to the cost of the residents. In my opinion, it's not, that's not the issue. I think you'll do a fine job, like Peter said, in looking at the finances. The urgency here is that we have debts we don't understand. We don't understand the infrastructure of the village versus the infrastructure of the town. My sense is the village has been around a lot longer than the town. Ain't going to take a lot of rocket science to figure out that our system is probably in tougher condition. So we have unexpected expenses going to happen. Where are we going to spread that load of debt that you don't know about right now? It's going to go on our backs. So we have an opportunity to spread that load. And I haven't even begun to talk about the fact that we know that there's grant money out there. Will there be grant money in 15 years? If so, eh, you might want to roll the dice. I'm not asking you to roll the dice. I don't want you to gamble our future and our kids' future. I want you to make the right decision based on what you know about availability of funds and knowing darn well that it doesn't really matter if those two glasses are perfectly equal or a little bit this way, a little bit that way, because if you can infuse the grant money, the overall volume in the two glasses are smaller to us. Thank you.
Richard Rolder, 20 Elm Street. On the subject of debt, I believe the debt the village sewer plant owes is to the village. Is that not true? So we owe, our right pocket owes the left pocket money. This became about, the way this came about is when the sewer plant was set up, unlike when you bought your house, the sewer plant was, when it was split off from the village, it was given no reserves of the village funds. It was, here's what you're going to charge in fees and run your plan on this. The super, or mayor at the time well knew that there was going to be some repairs needed to be done, but he gave them no reserves. I know nobody that would buy a house without keeping a few dollars in their back pocket in case the water heater went or some other thing came up. But that's the way the former mayor set up the sewer plant. So that expresses our debt. And the loan is to the village. The village is now considering setting aside money and giving them reserves, forgiving part of the debt as reserves. So there is going to be lesser debt there because the village is giving them the reserves they should have been given to begin with. That basically solves most of the debt problem. We all own homes, or most of us do, and know that occasionally you have to borrow some money to do something. Most everybody that buys a house buys it with a mortgage. Unless you're a lot richer than most people in town, you've done that. I'd like to comment on what anybody read in the paper today. We compared in the paper today, our town supervisor compared the fact that most people in the town, their sewer fee is a lot lower if you compared it to the value of their house, their assessed value. Your sewer fees are not charged on your assessed value, it's charged on your usage. This is a erroneous figure that has nothing to do with the sewer department, only to do with trying to convince you to go the town's way. In the past, the town has, originally, the first meeting the town had with joint-type meeting, explaining the new plant, talked about how the village didn't have to come in right away. They could come into the plant later on. It's going to be built with a capacity that they could take on the village at any time. That changed when they found out the village might not be interested in going in at this time. They decided, oh, you got to go in now or, never, we started hearing. We've also heard things, the speedies permit, which is necessary for the outfall pipe, which the town and village share, to run the sewage out into the lake to process what's left of the water that's left out into the lake. The town has said we can no longer be under their speedies permit unless we go with the town. I say that the town has negotiated in poor faith on this by trying to intimidate the village. And if any of you attended the meeting here two weeks ago, our town supervisor stood up here and talked to us like we were the poorest stepchild. And with this attitude, I don't know, can we negotiate where people are looking down on the village? We hear a lot of comments about Xerox during this negotiation. Any of you who have been around Webster as long as I have, which I doubt most of you have, you would know that the reason Xerox came to Webster was because of the village, not because of the town. All the town had to offer for Xerox was open land, farmland. What the village had to offer was a sewer system and a water system. So I say the village has done a lot. The village is still operating a cheaper plant. The village has a more up-to-date plant than the town much. At the last meeting, we heard about the town is going to put in energy conservation at their new plant and use the methane gas off the plant to provide part of the power for the plant. The village has been doing this for how many years, Jake?
About 40.
Since when?
About 40 years.
About 40 years. We also heard that this new plant is going to use a system of drying the sludge that has to be hauled away to cut down on the cost of hauling sludge. The village, several many years ago, put in a centrifuge to do exactly that. The village plant is the more up-to-date plant. The village plant is the more modern plant. The village plant needs a lot less updating and work than the town. Why would we, now that we paid for our own plant, kept our plant up to date, shut it down to go with one that we have to buy all over again? Thank you.
Can I reapproach for one man? For Mike? A gentleman asked about the aging infrastructure of our system. Our chief plant operator and our superintendent have done a great job of cambering, grouting, and making sure everything's running properly. They're on a system that keeps this thing going. And we know every inch of it, step by step. If you ask me where do you need a manhole, I can tell you exactly where it is. Right off Main Street all the way to Laton.
Can I add one more, Kevin? I mean, no disrespect, Larry Maggio, 204 London Road. My comments about the age of the equipment came from the village person they hired that sat right in that back corner and said, and I'm paraphrasing, but he says, "You've done a tremendous job keeping this thing together." It needs work. That's where I get my information from. The people the village hired to do the engineering study.
If I can speak to that, because it's part of my responsibilities, the sewer department, going out alone, you're not in the moment, public comment.
Lori Reynolds, 138 Judson Street, Little Board. I hope you'll take the residents that you're serving in consideration tonight instead of being bullied by the town, and you are being bullied by the town, to consolidate. Can I ask, I don't know whether Mersha would know, how much money was spent on our engineering study?
I couldn't tell you right now.
My understanding it was tens of thousands of dollars. You're going to just throw that out the window when you get? You had a professional engineer come in and do a study and his recommendation was to continue as a separate unity, not to consolidate. I don't understand why we got even considering consolidation. And if you wanted a cheaper way out, why aren't we going to Pure Waters? There's the next one. I think all of you are thinking of the grant money. It's all you're thinking about, the grant money. Maybe it will be there in the future, we don't know. But we don't have to make a decision tonight to get it just because of the grant money, especially if it's not benefiting our village residents. I'd also like to find out, maybe one of the board can enlighten me, why is it that the agenda just came out today on what was happening tonight? Wasn't in the paper last week. People didn't know you were actually voting until we saw the agenda tonight or this morning.
That was an oversight in terms of communication on Monday with the Webster Herald.
But that should have been a week before. It should have been in last week's paper about coming, you know, coming up this week. You don't wait until it comes out today.
True, but a lot of the items that go into the Webster Herald in terms of the agenda are those items which come after, you would have put that in the paper two weeks ago.
Okay, because I find it's not being transparent at all. I want a transparent government, village and town. And I think the people are getting tired of not knowing what's going on. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hear me? I don't care whose fault it was, it should have been done.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to answer something. The, our engineers that we paid for, they did not give a recommendation, which we did. He actually stated he did not give us a direction one way or another. That was in his job to make the decision. And second of all, the reason why there's a lot of money spent, the village paid for two engineers. We shared the cost of the one that was doing the joint and our own.
Anyone else would like to address the board?
I'd like to just ask one more question, I understand the clerks have been keeping a log of recent call-ins as to questions about the sewer plant change, could we get the results of that read to the end of the record tonight?
I believe that in terms of call-ins, the ones that I tabulated up here were thirty-six to two, in terms of residents who have called. Many of them were repeatedly calling in.
Thirty-six to two in what?
Thirty-six to two in favor of keeping our own sewer.
And that, and that's based on the documents that are distributed by Webster Citizens, actually, which, if you read it, there's some information that is not correct, they have some old information, so I encourage you to do some more homework on that.
I live at 19 Holly Drive, my question's really simple, you know, I'd like to hear from the board, why is, for those board members voting against or thinking about voting against, why this isn't the best interest of the village taxpayers and your constituents? That's the only thing I'd like to know, because I've seen arguments on the other side, and I've seen the other side, whatever, it could be a vote minority, it could be the majority, but I'd like to hear from you, the people who are representing me and my fellow village neighbors.
At the moment, I'm in between of your asking, I think that I can give you answers in both ways at this particular point.
I guess I'll chime in as well, like I think as Peter said, this is a very big, a very big decision, that involves a lot of stuff. What Kevin said about the employees and what they do, I agree with 100%, it's never about anything they didn't do or didn't do right. How I was looking at this is not 100% all about the bottom line cost, because we don't know every little piece of that yet. What, how I was viewing this process is similar to, right, the Webster School Districts, you know, One Webster, we got our director, Lita, in the back of the room here, who represents the chamber of congress, the school, the town, and the village. I went through this as a community thing, and I've been saying all along to the rest of this board is, why don't we talk about that we want to just partner in something with the town? And that should be a resolution, partner on a sewer treatment plan, and then work out all the details. I know Jake always refers to buying a car without knowing the price or whatever, but you still have to have a contract, at the end of this, you're gonna need an agreement between the two parties. So Jake's team and what they do, they offer camera service, they do these things that the town doesn't do for the residents. That would be something the village doesn't negotiate on. The employees was something we said we would never negotiate on, we ought to make sure the sewer employees were taken care of. So it was about partnering together so that together, a big sewer treatment plant, and the power of having more people paying into the EDUs, that possible concern of Xerox, the town has ability to grow, right, so the more growth, more people paying, your EDU should go down. So that's how I'm looking at it as a, when we sat up here, and I have to say again to the last meeting, we had the people from Webster Citizens actually say two different things in one sentence, that we shouldn't vote because we didn't know all the cost, but in the second sentence, it's going to be cheaper to do with the village. We don't 100% know at the end of the day, there's a lot of consolidation grants in the state of New York for municipalities to do things like this, so we don't have all the answers. And I agree, you know, Jake and I talked yesterday, I agree, we use some of our sewer employees for other things, but that doesn't mean we can't negotiate that piece with the town. So it was really just about doing what this community, I thought, represented. A lot of what we hear is town versus Webster, our village versus town, and if it's all just about the cost, then why didn't, we sat on the podium last week, the village just voted a couple of weeks ago to raise your EDU in the village, if everyone's not aware, from 150 to 195, that's a 35% increase. But we didn't hear a mention of that at all from anybody, but at this podium, it was about, it's all about the cost, it's not about the cost, it's about this continued argument of, from the town and the village, that they want to dissolve the village, and if we do our homework, that's not how a village can get dissolved. The residents can make that happen, not the town. So that's why, I think it made sense to have one plant, you know, on a few mile radius. And again, I talked to Kevin, Kevin's a great guy, he's knowledgeable, we talked, and we shared our opinions, and we just disagree, and it's okay, it's okay, and that's what I want, is to just, everyone be able to talk to each other and understand the reasonings, and that's my reasoning. As Gerald said earlier, it has been back and forth, it's been a roller coaster. But, you know, we questioned what Tom put in the paper today, I questioned what a lot of the residents have been seeing in their front lawns and in their mailboxes, because it's old, it's old information. You know, it says that we're the lowest sewer in the county, you're reading the county well, we're actually more expensive than the town right now, we just went, they're only 192, we went to 195. It says that we're only treatment only, and we still have to deal with collections. The town has also recently changed, they want collection, they want to talk about the collection. They also, any asset that's at the village plant that is going to be used in the town plant or the consolidation, they feel they should be paying towards. So it's a little bit different than it was before, and that 195 that we just went to, we keep referring to the engineer study, we were not supposed to hit 198 to 2026, I believe, and we already went to 195 two weeks ago. So, a lot of different information that's out there, and I would imagine for you guys as residents, it's very confusing, very confusing.
I don't know if I could say anything, can I say something? This will be my last talk, and I won't go back now. We talked about the costs associated with things, and I'm not trying to steer this around the horn, you also sold us that the water department was going to be cheap.
Never did, Kevin.
And it was 235,000, and now I know exactly what I'm paying, I'm paying a lot more. So having more people disperse to pay the same thing, you're always saying that, the more people you have, the more easier is the dispersal. It's not a true fact. You've proven it, we've seen it. I like working with you guys, I'll do anything to help you, but it seems like we're fighting an uphill battle. Mr. Lawler came down, asked fabulous questions, highly respected man, I told him that before the beginning of this. I will always respect him because he treated me like a man, and asked me the hard questions of the positive and negative, and that's what needs to be done. The one thing that's missing is, we're talking about numbers and how much. I took an oath, that man took an oath back there as my chief plant operator, ours is to protect the environment. In 25 years, well, 24 years, I protected over a billion gallons of water. That's the important thing.
Thank you. Again, I did not question your work ethic or what you did, just to be clear, and you did never ran, we ran, it was like eight years ago, I think, we ran on changing the water, it was never about price, it was the quality of the water, and you guys, if you look back at the votes and the amount of people that came out to vote for that election, the residents also made a statement as well, it was about the quality of the water, not the place that our water takes. We didn't, no, quality is different than price, Kevin, we never ran on making water cheaper, and that's the truth, you can go back and look at videos.
We haven't had a violation.
Oh, we just got behind this, we're talking.
It was never about price, thank you. We cannot have this continuing going on, we're gonna stop that for this.
It was not about the price per gallon of the water, the delivery cost for the water, but we were also told that it would not cost anything to switch, because all you had to do was turn the valve. Well, it didn't cost anything to switch, but it cost us close to $300,000, I believe, to put up a new cell tower, as we are still paying, or I think we're still paying debt on the state road tank, with village tax funds rather than water revenue funds, and we have a million dollars' worth of cleanup to do at the well field. But those were not costs related to water, because they are not water department anymore, it's village taxpayers now. So I guess you can say there was no cost to changing the water.
Thank you.
Do you hear what?
I just wanted to address a couple of the questions, we talked about the infrastructure, we talked about the collection system, and it's a matter of putting things in context. We also talked about grant money that's available, which are great things to think about, and honestly, the fact that we've been looking at this this closely, what equates to your cell phone bill every month for two and a half, three and a half years probably now, no one can argue that this board doesn't do their homework and do their job, they're looking very hard into this. We might disagree a lot, and I appreciate you giving me time, and I will keep it under 50 minutes. The, just might clarify, the engineering planning study that was done, there was an engineering planning grant that was done in 14, there was one that was updated in 15, and Ethan's here, it's worth every dime, right Ethan? Yes. That study did recommend, they looked at three options, the former board ordered that study, they looked at three options, they were keeping on their own, going to the county or going to the town, and they did find this, as it was reported, it might be out of context or maybe there's a misunderstanding, but that was recommended to stay with the village. The county was the second, in the middle of the road, one in the town, switching to the town at that time was viewed as the most expensive, but again, without all the details ironed out. And that's been something that's been sticking since we've been discussing this for the last two and a half years, is the details. There's a tough, and if you want to get your pen out, because there's a talk about grant money, the difference between IMG grants and consolidation grants, and what does that mean? Just, you gotta do some math, or some napkin math, the town, this phase one is done, there are phases two, if it was reported in the paper, there is $20 million. If they're lucky enough to get a 25% grant on that, if the village doesn't go, a $20 million project at 15, at 25% of, a 25% grant leaves on $15 million to bond, that's at 2%, that's $670,000, believe me, I looked at it earlier, per year, divided by 17,910 users, gets you about $37 per town user for the debt for that phase two. So the new grant is 40%, if the village combines with them, and we can do that, now we're dividing over a larger sum of people, that's 20, it's gonna be 24,821 people now when you combine theirs with ours, and, so I said, get a pen, I warned everybody. 40% grant on a $30 million project, because if we go with them, it's always gonna be more, it's spent about $10 million more ever since we've been looking at this in 16 or 17. If we go, 40% of $30 million is 12 million bucks, so they have to bond 18 million dollars. 18 million dollars, spread out among 24,821 people for 30 years, at 2% is 804,000 dollars per year, per person is 32 bucks, we're talking about $5. The difference, it sounds impressive, 25 versus 40%, it's $5 per EDU, is what we're talking about, as far as the difference in the grant money. I know everybody here, we've talked about numbers guy, I'm kind of psyched with numbers myself, I like them a lot, so that's the difference, we gotta put things in context. And I also think we, I love analogies, I talk about cars, right now we have someone that wants to give us a car, and if we don't act, that offer's gonna go away, to see what's behind door number two. This is like the let's make a deal thing, we know what we got sitting in front of us, but there might be something better behind there, or we might end up with a pig with a bow on it. But here's the analogy that I like, we have a two-seater car that we take to work, and it costs us $2.25 a day, and it's bring gas money to drive it. Two-seater car, we're in it by ourselves, we got space, but our neighbor's got a van, he bought a nice eight cylinder van, he picks up the real heavy guy down the street, not that efficient, because Sam and another guy driving it, but there's three people, and it costs them $3 a day, he says, why don't you come with us? You ride in the van, we got extra room, you hop in the van with us, and we're gonna save money. What we do, the math, we figured out, now there's four people in the car, they were costing them $3 a day, so there's nine bucks, you got your two and a quarter in there, all of a sudden we averaged it out, it costs 281. We went up 56 cents, they went down, that's the problem, is being the low number in an average, is we have to go up. So if it costs us, our thousand gallons to treat, or 100,000 gallons to treat costs us this much, and then we're the low part of the average, so if the top comes down and the bottom goes up, whatever it is, it's gonna cost us more to treat the same exact flow, the same exact flow character exists, nothing's changing except our cost is gonna go up. Now, I'm not saying don't cooperate with the town, we've cooperated with them for 40 years very successfully, had a wonderful relationship with them for 45 years, and this isn't Hatfield McCoy or whatever anybody else is saying, this is about looking out for the village residents, and our village residents deserve us, we've invested three and a half years, they deserve us to take that extra step and put things into context now, and say, okay, 40% sounds way better than 25%, it's five bucks, it's five bucks. If we're the low part of the average and we move towards the middle, we go up, they go down, which is fine, but there are great opportunities, they're talking about sludge drying, and that is a cost. I don't, I haven't heard what energy's gonna go into that, the two of the biggest energy use, or excuse me, expenses in the sewage treatment plant are labor and energy. If you're gonna dry sludge, it's gonna take energy to do it. What's those costs gonna be, how would you do it? Now, if there's an opportunity to do that, I would love to say, hey, let's build it a little bigger so we can operate, you know, we can use our slugs there, that's better for the community. But working out, doing things good for the community isn't, is a zero-sum exercise, it's a, if this is, there's no doubt, like Xerox, the roads we were discussing, there's no doubt that's better for the community, work on that together. If there's some doubt that this is better, okay, maybe we don't do this, but we still do this because it's what's better. We can play politics and, hey, I'll go with you on this, if you go with me on this, and this, and I'm not saying you guys are, but that's, this isn't Washington DC, we're not, hopefully, we're not those people.
Oh yeah, I agree. This is Webster, I love the way you. Sewer has nothing to do with any other things.
Right, and I love the way you look at it, Jerry, I get mad at you sometimes and frustrated, not often, when you're, I'm waiting behind you at the burger shop, which is every time I go in there, you're there, but not even frustrated with you, but I really believe that you want to do what's best for the community, and you wholeheartedly believe, I might disagree with you, and I don't have a vote, so it doesn't really matter, but I might disagree with you, but I really believe you want to do what's best for the community, and I think we've got different responsibilities, or different looks at what's best for the community. Wherever we can partner with the town, we have, for 40 years, we've had a very successful relationship with the town, and other communities, and other towns, but it just doesn't make sense to force something down or make it all or nothing. If it works good, it works good, I mean, that's all I gotta say, I just, almost all. When we talk about the infrastructure and the pump system, or the collection system real quick, I just want to clarify, the village has three pump stations, the town has, I heard 22, it's in their last report, and I heard it's up to almost 27. So if the village has three, and the town has 27, let's do that to make the math easy, together, we have 30 of them. If we're one through the flow, we went from being responsible for three pump stations to being responsible for 10 pump stations. Now, that's just a number, pump stations. We have pump stations that are relatively shallow and not that expensive, the town's got some, and the former supervisors here, they're four stories deep.
Oh yeah.
They're multi-million dollar pump stations, so we would be on the hook for financially, now, I understand now they're talking, we don't know, but that's, it's a danger.
Separate.
Yeah, it's a danger, but if we're gonna be separate, be a separate district, we already are, so why don't we keep Marsha holding those birch strings, and the village board in control of what we do and in control of the destiny, partner where we can, and then politely decline, it's, I was telling you guys yesterday when I was talking, I think, I'd like to say it's a hard decision, but I don't believe it is. I think it's an uncomfortable decision, because you're getting a ton of pressure, ton of pressure to do something that's probably not the right thing to do for our village residents, but the best decision, the right decision, isn't always the easy one. the best decision, the right decision isn't always the easy one, very often it's not the easy decision. And there's a ton of pressure and a ton of people that, you know, you don't hear from the residents when everything's going good. I don't call up weapons, say, hey, I bought a dozen things of yogurt there last week and they were all really good. I don't, I just don't do that. So people are happy when they flush the toilet and they don't see it again? They don't call us up and say, hey, I used the bathroom last week and it never came back up and everything was great. They don't call us up and tell us that. It just goes away and they're happy. So that's it. I'm sorry if that was.
James, can you get it? Eight thirty if anyone wants it.
I'm sorry.
Can I have 50 more minutes?
No, it's only 1 hour.
Well, it's meeting, probably a portion of the meeting at this point. Only thing I would say in regards to that one comment is that there has not been any discussion in terms of taking the 22 or 27 responsibility of pump stations versus our three in the conversation. Okay, we're moving on to agenda items. Number one, resolution to approve the claims and warrants. And I do appreciate all of the comments that were made tonight and they will be taken into consideration.
Mayor, excuse me. I didn't speak and I didn't want to, when I got to. I'm sorry. Why not?
As a courtesy.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Never seen you as casual like that.
This, this retirement's great for me. Around that 1075 road crossing and I'm not a village resident, but listening to this tonight because I became involved as supervisor in 2018, 17, when we were doing phase one of the sewer treatment plant and Barton and Juce, our engineers at that point in time, came to me and said that there was some grant money out there we had for consolidation. And at that point in time, they said, well, let's look into it. As Jake has said, we've had 45 years of nonstop cooperation between the town and village and every kind of an intermissible agreement that you and I could think of with the highway and the sewer and everybody that we could think of. School district, there, there are pumps went down, gas pumps went down, town, the village helped them out. We've been helping each other out in this community for years, so that's really not a problem. And we had agreements that I signed with Jake when he was mayor, I signed with Mayor Byrnes, I've signed with Mayor Elder and they're still intact today. So I'm not worried about agreements between the town and the village because we can get there. But I, what I did want to talk about here is while you're having this meeting tonight, the town board in a workshop is talking about second phase of the sewer. And so far, they've told the village res, or town residents tonight for first pack that it's going to cost $3 million for headworks. It's gonna cost $1 million for a fourth clarifier, 350K to repair a tank, 1.8 million with bubble diffusers. 1.4 million dollar for a leachate facility, which is just chasing income. They don't need to do it. Okay? $6 million for a new digester and 6.5 million dollars for drying sludge. That comes pretty close, Jake, to your 20 million. What I'm saying to you is how much is the village residents gonna pay for that? Okay? I think we had, when I was supervisor, we went back and forth about different things all the time, Jake and I used to go ahead, okay? We said a good time. But I was always, let the village do what the village do, needs to do, let the town do what they need to do. And I think that's the case we got here today. Okay? They're gonna, it's gonna cost them a lot more, 20 million to do this. Okay, you haven't added on engineering costs, you haven't done a lot more. And how much more is the village resident gonna pay? And I think that's something you're gonna have to look at. The grant money is nice, okay? But that's what they want. They can't get the grant money that you can get. And we know why. Okay? And we know why. There's a reason for that. So I'm just saying to you, those are the facts I know and one other thing and I don't know is true. On December 19th, 2019, before I left office, I sent this village board a letter. In that letter, I said, along with an engineering report, that stated that in phase one, the town of Webster put in a new generator. And according to the 1979 intermissible agreement that we had with the town and the village, that the village was subject to some of those costs. To this day, I don't know what those costs are. But I do believe you owe the town of Webster some money for that generator. Has there been any deal made to waive the cost of the generator to go to the regional system from the town of Webster? Has the supervisor made that deal? Because you've had a lot of secret meetings, I've been ticked off about that. Because the mayor, deputy mayor, supervisor, deputy supervisor have been having closed meetings since last year. Earlier in the morning, 7:30 in the village offices, this and that, people don't know about what was discussed there and they weren't public and you're wrong in doing that. Because he was a Democrat, there's three Republicans and you couldn't call it a caucus. It wasn't. It was an illegal meeting. I wanna know if there was a deal made. Are you gonna pay? It's been almost two years since you the letter and I was right in sending the letter according to the 19, 1979 agreement. Okay? And I heard there was some meetings about the money. I don't know if you're gonna tell me if those are true or not, but I hear there was some meetings about the money. I don't know what the dollar amount was. I know it was an outrageous number, that the engineers came up, I'm not gonna say it's true, we're not, there's negotiations. But you do owe the town and if you were to pay the town what you owe for the generator, we might not have had a rate increase on the town last year. So I've got to say.
There is a bill that will be coming to the village for phase one.
So you had meetings on it and you worked it out?
It was not necessarily meetings where it was worked out. It is from the financial director of the town. And it's not, it's not the $1 million which I heard at the end of.
Oh yeah, I agree. That was, I mean, that was an engineer thing.
Carl and Jude, if you check your emails, all that information is in your emails, all those meetings were always in your emails. So just take a look, it's in there.
There's a chance to go to the awards. Number one.
Time, they time order charge on air, 602?
Yep.
Is that our monthly bill or is that quarterly or? A lot of money, 602 for phone and internet?
It's a big building.
Have we looked into other options?
Yes. I don't believe green light is here yet, right?
Yeah, I know, it's on my street.
No, we'll look into that. Last time we checked, there wasn't, but we'll check again.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you, no problem.
There is a second bill, identical time order internet and phone further on for 13283 1241.
That's sewer.
That's sewer.
That's sewer.
It's, it's split up.
Quite a discrepancy between the two. What was the COVID credit, Marsha? It said, United States Treasurer payroll tax denied.
Yes, we, we were given faulty information that we could deduct the, I can't remember the name of the credit, but then we could receive a credit for time that employees spent out sick for COVID.
Oh.
But we could not. So this is us paying that difference back.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
One other one here, I think this might be up here, Ale, Jake, polydine for, for 1164?
Yeah, it's polymer, should be, make sure, John, you have some on?
That's for our centrifuge, we need that to separate the solids.
Okay. What Kevin said.
I don't need my hands.
We will have to answer all your questions.
Oh my God.
I know there are lots more.
If not, I'll add a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a general fund budget modification. And this is to fund the EAB treatment that was budgeted for prior year that was not incurred until the current year. This is from the contingency line AA 1990 dot 400 for $8,700. And this is moved to line AA 8560 or 70 under other. I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Third item, we have the resolution to authorize the treasurer to sign the appraisal agreement with industrial appraisal or non-site inspection and appraisal of the building structures, site improvements, fixed equipment, machinery and movable equipment indicated in the agreement. The agreement will include barcode tagging and movable equipment. I believe it was tabled last time so that we could have two additional items added to that and they have that. The proposed fee is $9,980. I think we were looking for those two to be added and added, so I would ask for a motion to approve the appraisal.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item number four, this is a resolution regarding the consolidation of the village's sanitary sewer collection system with the town of Webster. This evening, I am asking that this be tabled until the next meeting. We are looking for an update, two updates. One, an update from the treasurer, of which she spoke today and a meeting which is going on right now regarding the town and what they are looking to do and including in their proposal and an update of their proposal from the, for the sewer. In addition, it would be, and that is being presented by B and L. So I think that those are the two things that I would like. Also, it should be noted that as was pointed out to us earlier by Lori Reynolds, the notice did not appear in the paper. It needed apparently three to four days and it did not show up in the paper because of a mishap between the Webster Herald and the village. And so in lieu of that, it was not, because it was not published, it also was not, it would have made it not have had all the people here that would have come, having known that there was a vote regarding that. So I would like to table that vote until the next meeting in July. Motion to table.
Paul, if you need that information, and I apologize to anyone here who came here tonight because you just found out it was here in the morning for this meeting, that it wasn't in the paper or that you're waiting for more information, so. I'll make that motion.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy? Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the final item that we have, we have two more. It's a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a revised six-month extension request letter for the CWSRF grant. That extension is for the village of Webster wastewater treatment improvements along with CWRS, CWSRF project number C864380200. Regards the coordination discussions between the village and town and details and costs and regionalization and extension requested due to this process as well as obtaining the draft speediest permit and limits to inform this decision-making process. This would allow the village an extension in terms of the financing costs of the $10 million projected project of 1.4 million dollars with the remainder financed at 0% interest hardship financing awarded to the village. And it would allow for continuation of the study for that duration of five months, six months.
I'll make that.
If I can, I have a question on the accuracy of, of the Ethan's here, maybe, it says the estimated 10.9 million dollar project cost. I know back and forth, that's kind of floating with an estimate, but 1.14 million dollar weed grant with the remainder financed about 0% interest, clean water state revolving fund hardship financing awarded to the village. I think that was a remaining of the original submission, wasn't, I don't think the entire $10 million project must be 0% financed, it would be the initial portion that was submitted and approved of a 5.762 million dollar project and then the. And then the village, I would have to finance at.
4.8.
Is it 4.8 or 4.9?
I believe I had a conversation with Marsha today and it was, I believe, 4.8.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it was in case this is, I don't think kick stuff back and it's gone in, but.
Right. 0% interest is for financing, which was awarded to the village. And so that, that goes back to the original amount that we had asked for. That was prior to the added secondary trickle and filter along with our cost for disinfection and speed.
Yes, and as much as you see the station, I had four years of price increases, which actually had three and then six for a couple of years.
But that, that would be just. I have a motion to approve this resolution to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Apolita?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Finally, we have a resolution to authorize the village of Webster to pay $250 application fee and accept to sign and sign the incentive proposal with Empire State Development for assistance with the rehabilitation of the Xerox Webster campus roadway. This, I believe, is something that I think very significant. This result revolves around in part the incentive of 1.8 million dollars as well as then continuing on and making us eligible for the total cost of 9.2 million. So I think this application fee is a first step and relatively small in terms of rewards. So I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trustee Apolita?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And finally, we have a resolution to authorize the village clerk to sign a BOR letter making Taylor, Friar and Coon a broker for the Camp Alliance Workman's Cal. We saw the presentation earlier and I would recommend that we get moved to go with them as it is not going to cost the village anything. And I believe that they will be a good watchdog and advocate.
And Mayor Byers, if I could just say one thing. I still handle all the claims and everything. They don't handle any of that stuff, but they just are basically looking out for us. So that process doesn't change. I still handle all that stuff.
But as an advocate?
Yes. Thank you.
Looking for a motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Apolita?
Aye.
Trustee Valkyrie?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We are done with the scheduled items for consideration. We would move now to the attorney, but I am regretfully informing you, Don is not here this evening. His father passed away yesterday. So Don sends his regrets for not being able to be here, but I think that it's very important that he be with the family at this point in town. So he is here, not here, but we certainly extend to him our sympathies and to the family. He had nothing that he wanted to present, so we move to the clerk. Kevin?
I just wanted to let you all know that we hired somebody. We're excited. She's supposed to start on the 19th. Unfortunately, it wasn't the other person. She unfortunately took another job with the school district because she works with kids, her children, and it lined up more with her schedule. But our second person accepted and she's going to be starting on the 19th. So I just wanted to let you guys know. Thank you.
Looking forward to having a fourth person in the office to take off some of the load.
Yeah, and I did have one other thing. So there's been some, and I talked to Don about this last night. I could wait until next time to talk to you guys about it. But just for clarification for Jake and I, for hiring and firing processes, you know, I think maybe there's a disconnect on what your preference is or our role in that. Don had said, you know, we do have the right to, to fire and hire. But I just wanted to double check with you. So we were all on the same page on how you want that to be handled. And that was something that Don thought it was a good idea too because it seemed like maybe there was a disconnect. So just wanted to double check what your preference is.
Yeah, from my perspective, I mean, we talked about it before. Jake should have the abilities, the leaders to hire and fire, I think.
Each other.
I think, I think our role is to, you know, our role in that is to approve the rate, you know, and salaries, in my opinion. And I think we have to give you guys that ability to do that part of the league.
Thank you for that question.
I think I would personally, not necessarily understand any of those that, or give direction, but I would be interested in knowing who were being interviewed and under consideration. Not that necessarily it is something that I would intervene in. I would like to be.
Absolutely. Honestly, I appreciate the board's input. That's another layer, especially when you're dealing with employee matters. There's exposure, especially nowadays, in this day and age, exposure to all sorts of different, and liabilities. So it'd be good to get the board's input and, and the attorney sometimes, especially. But if it's, if it's going the other way from onboarding somebody, it can be a snake. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. That was all, yes.
Can I just ask one question of Jake? The town cost, go back to ours, was what, 192, or just 195? What's the difference? Why?
They said their rate there was 168 for operation and maintenance. And I think they reduced theirs from $40.28 for their capital charge to $23.23 this year because they had some debt that was figured out. But I don't believe that's inclusive of the $9 million bill that they have hanging there for phase one. There's an account receivable, I think, for the phase one money that I don't think's been, they have debt service on yet, so it's not calculated yet. So $9 million, again, 2%, it's $402,000 a year. By their 17,000, it's like 22 bucks added on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
Jake, anything more that you'd like to add on P3W in short?
Absolutely. I had three cups of coffee and 5,800 miles I drove last week. So I had a lot of time to think of stuff.
Three cups of coffee.
Yeah, only three today.
I told you no coffee.
Since dinner. No, the only thing I want to do is thank you for the EAB, approving that EAB. I want to share the success of that. We had three, since we started, the first time we did it was '16, then we did it in '19. It's kind of, they said it's labeled for every two years, but they said they had to kind of wink, wink and stretch it for three. There wasn't as much pressure. Now we're doing it back on a two-year schedule because EAB is here and it's evident and all. If you, if you look around, you'll see, you can identify ash trees very easily now, unfortunately, especially ones that haven't been treated. But we've, we had 120 something street trees that were ash trees and we treated about 50 of them. I think the first time we did about 60, we treated about 50 of them and then some in Case Park. Three of the trees are no longer there. Two of them were cut down for reasons other than disease. And one of them got EAB, I don't know if it didn't uptake, if it was the wrong time and the, the treatment form. So it's been very successful and we've had, we still have, you know, we're treating next week. They're going to do 48 ash trees that we're going to be able to treat. We're still going to have that species of tree available to us and around because, you know, because the board's authorized us. It's not cheap. It's 10 grand, but I think it's important to have those trees, especially. And when I drove to see my son in California last week and drove back, trees are premium as soon as you get east of Missouri. And then I took the higher road back and, you know, there wasn't really trees until you get back to Ohio area. So you don't realize how nice it is and what it adds to the environment until you drive through Wile E. Coyote territory for a while and there's not a single tree anywhere. So it's important that we save as many as we can, I think. And that's why we're a tree city and it's, you know, you're the board's investment that helps us save it too and keep these trees around for people to enjoy. Thank you.
I can remember when I talked to you on the phone when you were driving and he said, oh, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, I think I see a tree. I knew too, I think I see a tree too. That was a couple of times.
Yeah, there was, there's not a lot of them in certain areas.
That was good.
Was one just recently taken down in London?
Yes, 235 one, 235 Longham Grove. There was one that we treated, and we actually treated that one. We gave it some sort of fertilizer treatment a few years ago. The roots were growing, I can't, it's, I'm glossed for the word of right now, but where the roots, roots going to grow out of the ground rather than staying in the ground. And bark started coming off. It was something that was, it was not desirable. And we looked at it and it was from a, it's in that bill right now. It was something that was, we wanted to get rid of before it became a hazard. So, and it was a huge stump that was, I think the tree removal and the stump grinding was 1,300. I think that, yeah, that was in there, but a stump to be grinded from, from here to where others.
Other question for you, Jake. Ash is actually, actually very good burning wood. Is there a way in which the village can somehow keep that, whether it be down in the plant, sewer plant, and then sell that or at least pass it on to residents that may have wood burning stoves or fireplace or something like that that would be interested in it instead of just having it disappear?
I, I would think with ash trees, especially when they have emerald ash wood, there's restrictions on how far you can move them. You know, we certainly, you know, there's a 50-mile radius for moving firewood. But, you know, there's quarantine areas, but I think the whole state's kind of, it's everywhere now. But they still want to try to limit it. And I can double check on that, but I'm pretty sure the recommendation's still to chip them immediately on site. You get them below a certain size so that presumably you're grinding up the little critters when you're, when you're chipping the wood to make sure that they don't move on to another tree. That's, you know, because they all still live in the tree and even be cut up in logs. And then they'll emerge and go somewhere else. That's what they, the danger of those is they don't just hang out there and leave. They actually eat galleys underneath the, like a camion layer under the bark and they eat around it and they just kill the tree because they're starving. You know, starving from that area of, so.
Just wanted.
Yeah, no, it's a great.
It's a service that we could provide.
Occasionally, we will have people, if there's a tree that has to be removed, we'll, you know, identify it's in somebody's front yard and it's one of the village trees. We'll say, hey, we're going to cut this down. Every once in a while, you get somebody not in the ash tree, but they'll say, hey, can I have that for, for firewood? Absolutely. We don't have to have them chip it. They'll chip the smaller branches, but they'll leave the other ones there and be able to take and use it. It's win-win.
Any other comments, any other things you'd like to bring up? If not, I would make an announcement that the village board meeting next will be July 13th. That will be our organizational meeting. And it will also be a meeting in which we will have a vote on the direction that the board wishes to go. So that will be on July 13th and then there will be a village board meeting on July 29th. Anything else? None. I will ask for a motion to adjourn. I'll pay it.
Aye.
Pose. Carry. Thank you all for coming this evening. And I'm sorry in regard to the announcement not necessarily being in the paper. It will be in the paper and the next meeting will be the vote. As part of the agenda.